We're conducting this evening's meeting. The city council meeting is a hybrid. Council is back in the dais and the public is in via Zoom. Chamber is currently closed, the public except for special presentations. We have a few members of the public here regarding one of our presentations this evening. And let's see, Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Drew.
Here.
Councilmember Nichol.
Here.
Councilmember Pirstak.
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Here.
Mayor Boils.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're gonna have the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We have the invocation led by Reverend Dr. Tom Park of St. John's Lutheran Church. Following that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Drew. Please stand if you're in the chamber.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we praise and thank you for your abundant love and blessings in our lives. We confess that we have failed to treat our neighbors with dignity and respect and neglected to love them as ourselves. But in you we have forgiveness. Your grace helps us start anew daily. Holy God, please be with those who govern us by representing you. Please especially be with our El Segundo City Council members as they have this meeting today. We thank you for their willingness to serve. We ask you to be with them and grant them wisdom to do what is right in your sight. Remind them that they are your servants to do good. Make this evening's meeting successful and productive to improve the quality of life in El Segundo. As we celebrate this Christmas and holiday season, help us encourage those discouraged and assist those downtrodden. Make us be the instrument of your peace and eternal love. Please bless council members, their families, and citizens of El Segundo. Keep them safe and healthy. Lord, hear our prayer. We ask all these in the name of your Son Jesus, who was born in Bethlehem. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Dr. Tom Park and thank you Councilmember Drew. All right, we have a special presentation, Community Eve, I'm sorry, Christmas Eve, Community Dinner. And I've got a commendation and I think with us is probably, we have someone from Roxton Park here. Yep, I think someone's coming on right now.
Can you see me?
Hey, Arisia, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good to see you. Thank you. Happy holidays. I've got a commendation to read and then I'll turn it over to you if that's okay.
Sure.
It reads, "Whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner was conceived by El Segundo resident Bill Kaufman in 1983, Bill solicited the help of local businesses, residents, and organizations to fund, cook, and serve a traditional Christmas dinner that brought people together to share the holiday spirit. And whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner has become a hometown tradition that has served the community for over thirty years, the last thirty-two Christmas dinners have been served at the Jocelyn Center. And whereas the annual Christmas dinner will be provided this season, sponsored by everyone's favorite club, the El Segundo Kiwanis Club, along with the time and effort of many individual volunteers, along with the support of the Community Services Department Outreach Office. And whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner will be held at 12:00 PM on December 24th at the Jocelyn Center for the benefit of all those in the community who wish to participate in fellowship and share in some Christmas cheer. Now therefore, on this 21st day of December 2021, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby commend and thank all sponsors, supporters, and volunteers for their unselfish community service in keeping this hometown holiday tradition alive in El Segundo." Arisia.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and City Council. I want to thank you on the behalf of the Community Services Department, as well as thank Kiwanis for supporting the event, for making the holiday meal possible this year. Without them, it would have been possible. So it's great to return to some normalcy for the community. And again, we just wanna thank you and we accept this proclamation and thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll see you then, Christmas Eve. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to the LA Hyperion Sewage Treatment Wastewater Spill and Recovery Update with Elias Sassoon.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Protem and members of the City Council and happy holidays. This is an update regarding Hyperion as of December 21st, which is today. So with respect to the reimbursements, Hyperion has paid about $3,758,000 to 1,882 residents so far. Just over eighty-five percent of the claims have been processed. And I would like to, if you would, let the public know that December 30th of 2021, the last day this year, is the final day where if the applicants, which already are on the system and have been requested for more documentation, that's the deadline by which they need to submit any documentation that they need to. So once again, December 30th of this year is the last day that you could submit any documentation that you need to in order to get your request processed. And that's an important deadline. If there are any issues or any questions regarding reimbursement checks, you can always contact the city, you can contact myself, and you can reach me at telephone number, my office number is 310-524-2356. So regarding Hyperion Air Monitoring Project, this project is on a schedule. There will be two temporary mobile trailer units, which will be fully operational by January of next year. The transition from the two temporary mobile trailer units to three permanent stationary units will take place throughout the year of 2022. With respect to the two scrubber projects, both those projects are on a schedule. In fact, the scrubber by the primary tanks is already online and is working and is working very well. And the other one by the headworks facility is scheduled to be online this week. Regarding other complaints, there were total of nine complaints registered with AQMD for the past two weeks. And there has been no violation issued by AQMD since October 17th of 2021. The next El Segundo Citizen Forum Meeting is scheduled by Hyperion to be held on January 20th of next year at 6:00 PM and this meeting will be held virtual. With respect to the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee Report, you know, given the scope of the very unfortunate incident of July 11th of this year and the stakes involved in the understanding of what happened and its complication, the City of LA Public Works Board, they created an ad hoc advisory committee to oversee and review the investigation which was carried out by the City of LA Sanitation Department right after the incident, as well as assessments carried out by outside consulting firms with the objective of compelling of a summary report with recommendations moving forward. I was honored to be selected and serve in this committee, which was created in early part of September. There were nine meetings which we held. Some of the meetings were as long as four hours. This committee just concluded its investigation and the final report will be published January of next year. This would be the last update regarding Hyperion. And at this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Elias, this is Carol. Did we ever, did they ever find out the root cause of the spill?
Yes, ma'am. This report pretty much went into details at not only what happened and how it happened, but also it also talks about what was missing and what needs to be done. So an incident like this would not happen again. So basically, to be very brief, basically, the things that should have been maintained were not properly maintained and there were some failures with respect to some of the aspects of the treatment plan. And that was the cause of the incident.
So human error?
I'm afraid so, for most part, yes. The, one more thing I'd like to add if you don't mind. Last briefing, a question came up regarding the West Basin. So I personally contacted the West Basin and they did tell me that the quality of the effluent that they used to receive because of this incident had been compromised. And since the incident, positive steps have been taken by Hyperion to restore the quality of the effluent. So this quality has gotten better gradually and it's almost to its original condition as it was before the incident. So I'd like to, if you would, just wanted to bring that up because last time there was a question about that.
Elias, did you say that eighty-five percent of our residents have been reimbursed or was it ninety-five?
Eighty-five percent. So a little over eighty-five percent. Last time, it was just a little under eighty-five, but now just a little over eighty-five percent. It has been kind of slow for the last two weeks. And again, I would like to take advantage of this opportunity and ask every citizen who is listening to me if they have any issue with respect to their checks being reimbursed. Just contact me directly and I'll be more than happy to get involved.
Okay, so it's not like they're gonna stop processing. There's this deadline of December 30th to submit all documentation. My concern is that if a fair amount of those fifteen people, fifty percent of those people that have not been reimbursed, haven't submitted documentation, they're gonna be in trouble here in nine days or whatever, so.
Yes, sir. My understanding is that there has been clear communication between those individuals that are lacking documentation and they've been sent emails to that effect. So this deadline, as I indicated, is really important. If you've been contacted by Hyperion, that you do need to submit additional documentation. December 30th of this year is the deadline.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Sassoon? Thank you so much, Elias. Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to public communication. Is there anyone here in chamber wishing to speak?
Yes, we have two.
Okay, thank you. Mona, are any of these related to Raytheon?
They are. Both are B7, item B7.
Both are?
Yes.
Okay, I think we should hold off then. Nope, because we don't know if it'll get pulled. Yeah, please continue. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Boils and City Council members. My name is Melissa McCavity. I've been a resident of El Segundo for twenty years and I'm here to speak about item B7 on the consent agenda, the Chargers-Raytheon agreement. In listening to the prior City Council meeting on December 7th, it is my understanding that the City Council voted four to one to overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission. That recommendation by the Planning Commission required that Raytheon either provide the location for the 7.54 acre park or negotiate a comparable public benefit before Raytheon is allowed to build its new storage building. While I believe this second reading tonight is pretty much a mere formality, after hearing the comments at the December 7th Council meeting, I wanted to express my concerns for what it's worth. I in no way am attempting to diminish the contributions that Raytheon or Continental Development Corporation have provided to this community, including the CDC's newest offer to provide $3 million to fix the plunge. It just seems prudent and that it is in the best interests for the residents of our city to reach a firm agreement with Raytheon prior to allowing it to build the new storage building. The fear being that Phase 3 will never happen. And by agreeing now in this amendment that the city require the park requirement now, by not making it be triggered now, the city may never receive this park. I can't read my own writing through my foggy glasses. It seems as though the Planning Commission is not out of their bounds by recommending an actual agreement from Raytheon. I understand that field space has been offered and it sounds like the Little League Challenger Division will continue to get the use of the fields. So at a minimum, I hope that we can get Raytheon to commit to providing more ADA accessible passageways for the Challenger players and their family members so that they can gain easier access to the fields if they are continuing to use them. I also sent an email earlier today which outlined in more details some of the issues I have with the parks that are being offered and made available, such as time constraints so that Little League could not possibly plan a season and rely on those fields. I believe at the December 7th meeting, it was even discussed that those fields would be used for practices only and no game schedule. Also, having lived in El Segundo for twenty years, I've never physically stepped foot on those fields, nor did I know in any way, shape, or form if we're allowed to and it sounds like we're not, because there's gates around it, you have to check in. And then even with the new agreement, it sounds like all those requirements are still gonna be there and we can't simply just make a reservation the way you could for any other City of El Segundo park, which is not the most user-friendly system, I just have to say it. It drives me crazy sometimes. I can't find the pickleball whenever. I have to search pickleball and then it comes up. But anyway, that's another issue. As the Planning Commission did offer to draft an amendment to the agreement stating the above either/or situation, I implore you to please follow that recommendation. Please follow your Planning Commission and require Raytheon to adhere to their recommendation, which is either to come to an agreement with the city as to how the 7.54 acre park obligation will be met or to negotiate a comparable public benefit. And all of this should be done prior to the building of the Phase 4 storage facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. McCavity.
Good evening, Mayor Boils and fellow council members. My name is Mike Zarniky. Can you hear me all right? Mike Zarniky, resident at 501 Oregon Street. Firstly, I wanted to just wish you all a happy holidays. But while I'm here, I too wanted to speak on behalf of endorsing your Planning Commission's recommendation regarding the field or the potential field at the Raytheon Development. You spent a lot of time in your last session negotiating hours and commitments of access. I think that alone, I think underscores the scarcity of field space that our town faces. So I hope in no way that that agreement, which is a very valid one, absolves the developer from their commitment to provide field space to our community. So you don't need to be told, and I'm sure I'm not the one to say this, but the opportunity, the mere opportunity for more field space is so rare in these days. You know, I know my two boys played on the field at Imperial. That field's gone. I hear stories from other fathers who are my age, who lived in this town, played on field, one up on the bluff on Grand, the other one over by the post office. Those fields are gone. So we only seem to hear stories of losing field space, losing park space. And I hope that you make the decision to at least keep that possibility alive, that we can gain field space. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zarniky. Anyone else in chamber?
No one else in chamber.
Okay, anyone else on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Unless someone's on audio, maybe?
Angelo, I don't see any hands raised. Can you confirm?
I confirm, no hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes public communications. Mr. Mitnick, would you like to follow up on those comments?
I think they were sharing their perspective on item number, consent counter item number seven. So I think that's for council's digestion and you do what you do.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mitnick, just one piece on, there was a question or looking for clarification on how fields could be used with our Parks and Rec system? And I think that that was one of the points we deliberated a few weeks ago that we would be able to reserve those fields through that same system. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for clarifying. Also, did we finalize the agreement with them? Has that all been squared away on the field use?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so it's the two fields, weekdays, four hours, minimum five to nine. Minimum of two fields Saturday and Sunday for twelve or thirteen hours. Potential for a third field, weekdays and weekends.
Yeah, we do have staff available to clarify that. I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head.
Mayor, Council?
We don't have to pull it. Yeah, unless...
Yes, that's correct. What you outlined, Mayor, and just to... There was also a comment made about competitive play and youth sports will be allowed to use the fields on the weekends during the hours you mentioned for competitive play. So those changes were all made to the agreement.
Great. Okay, thanks for clarifying. All right, we have procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolution of the agenda by title only. Would someone like to make a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only?
Jeruso moved.
Thank you.
Nichol, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirstak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Boils?
Yes.
Okay, 5-0, thank you. Okay, consent calendar, items three through eight. Are there any pulls? Number seven, please. Number seven. Any others? Okay, do we have a motion to approve items three, four, five, and six? Jeruso moved. Okay, you have a second?
Pimentel, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirstak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you. All right, item seven, Councilmember Drew.
Yes, so to propose Los Angeles Charges Headquarters and Training Facility Development and Raytheon Storage Facility Relocation Project Development Agreement in Ordinance Second Reading, I just wanna make a couple of clarifications. We had obviously an extensive discussion about this a few weeks ago and I'm not gonna rehash that entire thing. However, I want there to be an understanding that the points I brought up, this was not a vote against the charges, it was not a vote against CDC Mar Ventures, it was not a vote against your idea. The no from me was to allowing this agreement to go through without any commitment whatsoever or timeline from Raytheon as to when we would get that park, when it would be allocated, when it would even be discussed. And that's why the no came up. And that still has not been rectified. So while I understand that the memorandum of understanding about the current fields and field space and things like that, we worked that out. Was that a good thing? Yes, it was. Absolutely. And I appreciate it. However, the reason why that original development agreement was put through, what we wanted to get out of that was much-needed park space. And all I asked was a plan for when that would go through. For example, the original agreement was made in 2016. Is it reasonable to expect that in ten years from the beginning of the agreement that that would be enough time to at least allocate the space or figure out where it's supposed to be? Or give us an alternative? I don't think that's unreasonable. And the very fact, and I'm sorry I don't remember the gentleman's name that was up here, came up and just looked at me and said, "Yeah, no, we don't know." That's a huge problem for me. Our constituents expect certain things, okay? You had two people in here, we had about four or five, I think, emails that came through. The truth is, I don't think a lot of people really are paying attention to this right now because of this fact, they're in the holiday season and nobody's really around right now. So I don't think this is the last conversation we're gonna have on this. I believe that we need some semblance of a plan from Raytheon to make good on the original agreement. And that's why I voted no, and that's why I will still vote no this evening.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Drew. Would someone like to move approval? Are there any other comments, questions, concerns?
I have a question. I meant to ask it two weeks ago and I didn't. So it says that the address is 2,000 East El Segundo Boulevard. But this property is not on El Segundo Boulevard. Correct? Am I wrong?
Address change is pending.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know because all I was thinking was, is this one of those things to send paparazzi to the wrong address so they have no idea where this practice facility is? Or is it because the street has actually not been established yet? Okay.
That's the Raytheon Properties address prior to subdivision.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure. That's the only question I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I did wanna just mention that, you know, one of the things I had brought up about is, you know, we will have access to this park for quite a few hours during the week and we will just be getting revenue from it, from charging people, the clubs and like the guilatinis using it. And one of the things that I asked the city to do is find out how much it costs us to maintain a field at our current Roxton Parks. And it's basically $40,000 a year, no, $40,000, yeah, $40,000 a year per park, per field. So there's three fields there. So that's basically, you know, quite a bunch of money that we are not having to outlay to have access to this park and we're gonna have this park for close to fourteen years, access to this park for fourteen years. So it's just definitely something we need to, you know, consider because we do have our own current parks that are vastly in need of improvement. And we don't, we're scrambling, looking for funds to improve those. And having an additional park and then paying that additional fee, that maintenance fee that we now don't have to pay will really help us, enable us to put our attention onto our Rexon Parks, our current Rexon Parks facility.
Thank you, Councilmember Pirstak. All right, anything else? Will we be naming a new road? Just throwing it out there.
Nash.
Darn. Okay, anyone like to move approval?
Nichol, so moved.
Pirstak, second.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please take a vote?
Councilmember Drew?
No.
Councilmember Nichol?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirstak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, 4-1.
I'm sorry, 4-1.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. All right, let's see, moving on to public hearing. We have a public hearing on preferential parking zone two for portions of California Street and Holly Avenue in Kansas, which is being continued to January 18th, 2022. And we are now on to, nothing to add there, right, Scott?
No, sir.
Okay. We're on to staff presentations. Item nine, Park Place Roadway Extension and Grade Separation Project Addendum to Final Environmental Impact Report and Agreements for Engineering Design. Mr. Mitnick.
Elias Sassoon will introduce the item and you'll have a short presentation. This is a very exciting moment. This is a very exciting moment in this project.
Uh, yes, indeed it is. Uh, good evening again. So this item before you is regarding Park Place Roadway Extension and the two proposed bridges for two railroads. One being Burlington Northern Santa Fe, or they go by BNSF. And the other one is Union Pacific Railroad, or UPRR. The, at the direction of the city council, staff issued an RFP for design of this project on February 3rd of this year. A total of five consulting firms responded to this RFP. A panel reviewed all five proposals, and the top three firms were selected to be interviewed. Moffat and Nicol, they ranked number one. And the second ranking firm was Michael Baker International. Also, on May 7th of 2019, city council approved the environmental assessment and certified the environmental impact report, which was based on only one bridge to be shared by both BNSF and UPRR. Since then, that both railroad companies requested the city to have their own separate bridges. Consequently, the environmental impact report had to be amended. This work is now done. At this time, staff is recommending the approval of the addendum to the final environmental impact report. Also, staff is seeking city council authorization to hire Moffat and Nicol to do the engineering design, and Michael Baker International to provide us with their input as we proceed with the design of this very complex project. Mr. Keith Gilfilan and his team with Moffat and Nicol are here with us tonight. He will have a quick and short presentation regarding this exciting project. At the end, you get to see a very exciting video. Also, Ms. Jessica Ditto with Michael Baker International, who was involved in the processing of the environmental study, is here tonight as well. So in the interest of time, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Gilfilan. And after his presentation, I'll be back if there are any questions, and I'd be more than happy to answer those questions. Keith?
Hey, thank you, Elias. And just let me confirm that you can hear me clearly, and you can also see the presentation on your screen.
You're good, thank you.
All right, good. Well, hey, thank you for this opportunity to present the project. And this is going to be a very high level overview, if you will. I've got a number of my team members on the phone if you would like to ask specific questions. I've got my rail and civil lead, Phil Balmeo, my rail design lead, Sam Mansur, our hazardous material expert, Keith Gilbert, our utilities expert, Sam Mendez, and also our traffic expert and consultant, Ray Comidi with Lynn Consulting. So we'll postpone any of those questions till the end. But what I'd like to do is share with you, you know, an eight to 10 minute presentation, some of the basics to kind of give you an idea and a little preview of the project. So if we can go to the agenda on the next slide. Again, I want to spend just a little brief moment to let you know who Moffat Nicol is, a little culture, a little background on us. I really want to share some of the challenging and interesting aspects of your project, the way of alternative one C that was preferred project in the EIR, the challenges and the opportunities with utility relocations, how we will address the hazardous material, and of course relocation of monitoring wells. And as Elias mentioned, we've got a really neat video to share with you into this presentation to give you a very good visual perspective of how we see this project being built and what it'll look like long before it's constructed. So with that, I'll go into a little introduction with Moffat Nicol. As you can see on the next slide, we are a family owned company. The gentleman on the left there, far left, is Frank Nicol. The gentleman in the middle is John Moffat. Seventy-five years ago, they started the company working part-time on our kitchen table in Long Beach. And that's where our corporate headquarters is located. You can see in the upper right, our current CEO is Eric Nicol. He's Frank's grandson, so we've had our third generation of the family in a leadership position with the organization. From the two gentlemen seventy-five years ago, we have grown to 850 total employees. Three hundred of those are located in California. And like myself and over 150 other employees, we are now shareholders. So there's a very, what I want to say, very entitled and preference to really do our best to provide projects to various clients. But we have three service areas that we focus on, ports, water, and transportation. As you can see on the screen there, when it comes to transportation, we focus on rail and transit, the commuter rail, as well as the heavy and high speed. Grade separations, which is my expertise, I've been with the company for over 15 years, and that's been my entire focus. On the transportation, we do highways and roadways, and also environmental, we have NEPA and SEQA expertise and skillsets in-house. Okay, with that, let's move on. Talk a little bit about your particular project, the Park Place Extension. As you can see on the next slide, this is the alternative one C that was the preferred project from the EIR. And as you can see here, the focal point of this is the cul-de-sac, the intersection with the extension of Park Place and also Allied Way. The location of this cul-de-sac is going to be a key. As you can see, we got not only the intersection with Allied and Park Place, but also we want to accommodate a future extension and connection to Rosecrans Avenue. So the location of that cul-de-sac is going to be vital. And as you can also see, as Elias pointed out earlier, we've got two railroad bridges that will also grade separate the cul-de-sac. On the upper left is the existing UPRR or Union Pacific tracks. Our intent is to have minimal impact to their tracks. And also in the green, you can see where we're going to relocate the BNSF tracks that currently are lined in what I'll call the curvature piece down at the bottom of the screen there. As we continue and extend the Park Place to the intersection with Nash, we'll be constructing a new intersection there and also accommodating and maintaining access to the businesses at those locations. Getting into the, few of the details on the project, again, this is just to kind of bring your awareness as to, you know, this is just not a basic roadway project. There's a significant amount of utility relocations. These are non-city owned utilities. You can circle the key ones there, which are what we call the high risk utilities. The 16 inch oil line, we have two of those. We also have a 20 inch oil line. Again, these are all Plains American facilities. We've worked with them on a number of projects in the past, quite familiar with what it takes to relocate those high risk utilities. We also have a 42 inch reclaimed water line. That's a facility that is owned by the West Basin Municipal Water District. Then also we have two city, or a city storm, excuse me, a 54 inch and a 60 inch. Now, these are just some of the major utilities that will have to be addressed and relocated early on. But we also have utilities associated with the roadway itself, AT&T, sewer and water facilities will go in the roadway. We just give you a perspective of some of the major utilities that are part of this project. The next slide is the hazardous material mitigation. When you first look at that, you probably think, this project's got the measles. But in essence, all these, up in the upper right, you can see the circles with the crosshairs. These are the borings that will be taken as part of our Phase Two environmental assessment. The Phase One was done, which was basically the paper research and the documentation based on the historical land uses. And as you can see on the screen here, you got the Kramer parcel, and then to the south of that, the Air Products parcel. These are well-known contaminated properties based on our previous land use. In the case of Kramer, it was a brass manufacturing facility. And the other ones. So, you know, this is our approach to trying to minimize the risks, so that when we put our plans and specifications and the bid documents together, you know, the contractor's going to know how much contaminated material or soil that he's got to address in either disposal onsite or offsite. The other component here, and you can see the, the red squares and the blue squares, particularly the red ones with the blue dots in them, these are the existing monitoring wells. These need to be relocated, because as you can see here, they're in direct impact with constructing the project, both the roadway and the relocation of the BNSF railroad. So a lot of front-end work needing to be done before we can actually start construction. All right, let's move on to the next slide. So we have in-house capabilities that can give you a real good perspective of what the project can look like long before it's constructed. And these are basically still renderings. This is a view looking northwesterly along Park Place. Gives you an idea of what the project could look like from the standpoint of the railroad bridge, the cul-de-sac. Again, the landscaping here is just a concept. We're going to work with the city staff to come up with what's really the preferred look that the city wants, both from the aesthetic treatment of the bridge, as well as the landscaping in the median, and also on the sides of the streets as well. And the next one gives you, next slide gives you kind of the basic or bare bones, look on the left, and also the enhanced opportunity on the right. And this is looking south on Allied Way as you approach the cul-de-sac. Hopefully you'll get the perspective that the project has a lot of surface areas that will be nice to do some sort of aesthetic treatment. On the left, you can see kind of the exposed retaining walls, as well as the bridge structure. If it doesn't have aesthetic treatment, known on the right, it's something that, you know, the city can take pride in and how it can really look in the end. Again, this is what we look forward to in working with city staff to accomplish this. So now I want to get to the fun part, which is the next slide. And we put together a video just to give you an idea of how we see this project being constructed. We see it in a couple of phases, and don't get the perception that this project's going to fall out of the sky, that just doesn't happen. But the first phase you can see is constructing the south bridge. In addition, we'll be relocating utilities as part of this phase. But again, it'll be excavation down and then bottom up construction as far as the south bridge. Excuse me. And once the south bridge is completed, then we will shift the Union Pacific Railroad that you see operating there onto the new bridge. Here it comes in your screen. Once this occurs, we go into the second phase, which is the construction of the north bridge, as well as a lot of the roadway elements. So this gives you a perspective of the phases. Second phase will probably be one of the longest phases. And you can see in the upper right, now that that bridge is completed, the BNSF railroad has been relocated, and they will operate on the south bridge. The UP has been switched back to their ultimate operating on the north bridge. The final phase, of course, as you can see, again, the landscaping and the street striping, signalization, and the final aesthetics and the operational activities will be done. Again, the landscaping is just a concept, and we'll work with the city to come up with, what is the look that you really want this project to be? So once the project is constructed, now is a good time to take an aerial 360 degree view of how it really functions and operates. Here you can see that the railroads are safely separated, that with no conflicts to the vehicular traffic down below. You get an idea of how the vehicles can maneuver and access around the cul-de-sac. You get an idea of some pedestrian activity and cyclists. And this is really things that we can do in-house to give you an idea of how we want to really make this project look long before it's ever constructed. And here it gives you a good idea to swing down around. Well, you know, it's one thing to have an arrow, but hey, we want to put you right behind the wheel and drive this project. So here we approach the cul-de-sac. And one thing that we want to achieve is visibility and safety. So we want to open this up. You can see the bridge abutments with the openings, giving you that visibility, so that when you interact with cyclists coming around the cul-de-sac, it's a pleasant and safe maneuver. So we, here we go up Park Place, we turn around, come back and go to the east on Park Place. Gives you an opportunity here to go three quarters of the way around the cul-de-sac and just see how that movement can be made as we go north on Allied Way. Again, the interaction with vehicles, you know, cul-de-sacs are more and more of a great way for a volume of traffic to safely go through an intersection. But we hope that the city has many sunny days to enjoy Park Place Boulevard. But I think most importantly, as you can see here, with the inquisitive daughter asking questions of her dad and him pointing out the unique aspects of your project, we hope as a design firm, that the city and the community will embrace this project just as his father and daughter do. And with that, I'd just like to give credit to the person that really makes me look good, and that's my animation manager and structural lead, Aladdin Mumbai. And with that, be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions?
One question for staff. And I know, I remember when this was brought before the planning commission years and years ago, I asked a similar question. And it was, you know, why are we not adding the extension to Rosecrans in this project? And it was told to me back then that the amount of work that had been done to date would essentially have to be thrown out and start all over, and it would like restart the clock, and it would be like six years wasted. So I guess my question is, we're seeing it in some of these renditions? Might, and so just, you know, I'm not going to hold anybody to this, but how long after this is completed? If this, once this roadway is completed, can we start the process to then have that piece added to get through and connect to Rosecrans?
We'll have Elias Sassoon.
Yes, uh, so, thank you for the question, yes. As, as it was mentioned by Keith, the first, the first phase of the project is to do the three legs at this roundabout. And by the way, by circular cul-de-sac, you meant the roundabout. And then the, the fourth leg is the connection to Rosecrans, I'm sorry, Rosecrans Avenue. That, that could be also implemented. And as we go forward with this design, we will make sure that, that the, the second phase, which is connection to Rosecrans is also doable. So answer to your question, it is doable, and it is intentioned to do that as a second phase of the project.
What kind of timeline are we talking about? Because I mean, there's, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not our land. So there's eminent domain issues, I mean, there's, there's stuff that has to be done in order to obtain it.
Correct. So it takes about two and a half years to really design what is on the table. And then, and then frankly, at this time, we do not have all the funding for construction in place. But if we able to secure the funding, I would imagine this, this project, as significant as it is, it will take another good two years to build. If not, frankly, if not more. A lot depends on the utilities and a lot of unknowns that we have at this time. Then at least we're looking at, at this second phase, at least five years down the road, if not more. So it's going to be, it's going to be a few years down the road. And, and frankly, that's minimal.
Thank you.
Sure.
I want to join a bit of the hit parade chorus on this and say that it is in our interest to begin that planning now. We are going to be shaking down the cog for upwards of a hundred million dollars to make this 130 million dollar project come to life. And I think that it is largely unrealized in its true value, if we are missing that part. And I realize it can't be a part of this portion, but we would be wise, and I know it's not specific to this, what we're voting on tonight, but we would be wise to be moving on that process in parallel as, as, as we are able.
Yeah, I concur. One quick, I just want to thank our colleague Mayor Butts in Inglewood too, because while he was chair of Metro, he came through with some big dollar apportionment for us to get this design study done. Without that, we wouldn't be where we are today. So I concur, times of the essence. I imagine this project has increased quite a bit since we first looked at the number in totality. So, all right, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Chris? I'm going to, I'm going to jump on the echo chamber again on that to not, like, the decennial transfer process to bring this to life was not a trivial undertaking, and certainly our colleagues at the sister cities, not, most especially Mayor Butts are key to it. But this has gone from 65 million dollars five years ago to 125 million dollars conservatively now, in terms of scope and breadth. A lot of that is tied up with moving utilities and moving these railroad lines. So if we are going to look at another spur of this, again, I will implore that we need to make those sorts of things happen.
Thank you, Mayor Protan Pimentel. Any other comments, questions? All right, well, we've got three items ahead of us. First is to adopt a resolution approving the addendum. And Mr. Hensley, would you please read the resolution by title only?
Yes. Mayor and council, a resolution approving an addendum EA dash one three two zero to the El Segundo Park Place Extension and Grade Separation Project. Environmental impact report is ready for adoption.
Who would like to move approval of the resolution?
Persick so moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Nickel's second.
Great. Madam Clerk, would you please take a vote?
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Persick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have, we need a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Moffett and Nickel for seven million, two hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars for the engineering design of the Park Place roadway extension and grade separation project and authorize an additional five hundred thousand dollars for design-related contingencies. Would someone like to move approval of that?
Jerus so moved.
Thank you.
Persick second.
Great. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Persick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Five zero.
Great. Okay. Also, they're asking for a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Michael Baker International for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for consulting services for the Park Place roadway extension and grade separation project. Who would like to move approval?
Persick so moved.
Great. Thank you.
Jerus second.
Excellent.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Persick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Five zero.
Great. Major progress. Thank you, Elias. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, everyone that's been involved, including some people in this room. Okay, next up, we have recruitment process for positions on the committee, commissions and boards, citywide salary schedule update. Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll take care of this. It's a short one. We do this in compliance with the Matty Act every year at this time. It just is the announcement of potential vacancies that come up for the boards and commissions. As a reminder, on the first meeting in January, we will have, at your direction, we're going to have a report on the committees, commissions and boards, looking at the structure and potential recommendations. So if there are any revisions impacting this in terms of openings with those committees or commissions, that, that'll just be adjusted accordingly. So we just need to get this done so we can make people aware of these openings for the next year.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Just, just one. I just want to make sure that we, before interviews are, do take place, that any decisions that are going to be made or any changes, any modifications are done prior to that. We don't want to bring people in and then change the game on them.
Understood. And we're coming to you at the next meeting on, on January eighteenth. So nothing will happen between now and the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, to, to Councilmember Drew's point, so some of the processes for different committees have changed a bit. Is that going to be part of it as well as not just who we're interviewing for what committees, but how the process will be done?
In terms of how you do the interviews?
Yeah. You know, in one, in one case, we had an outside subject matter expert do the first round of interviews. I think in another case, we had staff do a vetting round, given the number of people that it interviewed, so.
We'll, we'll provide flexibility for that. For, for, for now, council has historically interviewed all the candidates.
Yeah.
But when you had situations, you had large numbers of candidates, you had a different approach as you articulated. So we hear the concern there. So we'll work that out.
Okay. All right. All right, great. Do we have a motion to direct staff to open the recruitment process for the positions on the committees, commissions and boards that expire in 2022?
Jerus so moved.
Thank you.
Nickel's second.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Persick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. All right, city clerk, reports from your office.
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. By the way, this is going to be Mona Schillen's last city council meeting on her way to retirement in, what, eight days or something like that? Who's counting?
Actually, three working days.
Three working days. All right, let's give her a round of applause. We're going to miss you, Mona. Thank you. City treasurer, don't see him this evening. Councilmember Drew?
Uh, yeah, actually, I just wanted to put a little shout out to our, pit bull of pickleball, Connie Thrasher. She put on the Jingle Fest tournament, the second annual this past weekend. And also shout out to Sean Green and staff for, for getting to yes and getting that done, Melissa McCollum as well. There was a hundred and thirteen pickleball teams that came, that played in three different divisions, men's doubles, women's doubles and mixed doubles. Skill ranges from beginners to advanced and the age range of the players was eleven to eighty-four years old. Really an incredible event, a lot of fun to see something of that size come into town. I think the future is very bright for things like that and I look forward to what Ms. Thrasher and our city staff can put together in the future. Thanks.
Excellent. Wow, that's a huge turnout. Thank you. Much better than what we used to get in the bowling business, I'll tell you that. All right, Councilmember Nickel?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a big shout out to the Police Officers Association and the Quonis Club for putting together Santa's sleigh again this year. You know, it, it's a bit of a thankless job unless you're riding on the sleigh. And to get to see all those smiles from all those kids and just the, the spirit of Christmas alive and well here in town. And it's just, I think it's really important that the public knows that every single person involved in that event is volunteering. The police officers, as much as they may be driving in police cars and they may be wearing police jackets, they're volunteering their time. The Quonians are volunteering their time. Santa's helpers, you know, the knighted Santa Clauses that are up there and, you know, doing Santa's good work, again, volunteers. And so I just wanted to put a, give a big shout out to all those men and women out there putting forth the effort to get that done. And I am told from an elf on the sleigh that next year they're going to start on the, what is that, the? Yes, but it's the southeast. Southeast corner of town that was missed this year due to weather. So that is information that was taken from the source's mouth and shared here today. So Merry Christmas to all, happy holidays and I wish you guys all a very safe and merry time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nickel. Councilmember Persick?
Yeah, so I just, I want to make sure that we put on a future, very soon agenda, something to, to talk about the, creating a park development fee, a rec park development fee that would read something like, we take a snapshot or a calculation of the current resident to park ratio in 2021. And then we apply that as a, as a foundation. And then any development that comes into town where added residents are being added, we act, the, the developers have to provide that same park ratio. And if they can't, then they need to pay a fee that can go into, that can go to a park fund that will enhance our current existing parks. I think it's real important with the changes coming from the city, the city council, the state, state of California that have just been approved this year, as well as the discussion we had today about our parks and recs and that our parks and recs are not being maintained as, as well as we like and how much they cost. So I would really, I've been, I, it's, it's very important to me and I just want to make sure it's on agenda very soon, that we talk about that and have develop, create some type of a development that either encourages people to provide, developers to provide additional parkland or give us a fee so that we can enhance the current and existing parkland.
Good.
And then lastly, I just want to thank all the people that have done the, the Candy Cane Lane. Once again, that's of another volunteer attraction here in town that people on the Acacia, Acacia Street volunteer their time and they're, they put the expense in to decorate for not just our community, but communities far and wide, because I, I hear it's been very, quite busy. So thank you to all of them and thank you for the city stepping up and helping police or offer security for that, 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 that Candy Cane Lane. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope everyone has a wonderful 2020, 2022.
Thank you, Councilmember Persick. Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Mr. Mayor, a few items of regional import. First off, James Webb Telescope goes up on Christmas Eve in the morning out of Guyana, Northrop, who is a great resident or commercial resident of ours. This comes out of their sister facility on their space campus in North Redondo. Had an opportunity to see that launch event with some of our neighboring governmental peers. It's truly impressive, looking back thirteen point eight billion light-years into the past. As far as sanitation and transportation, sanitation nearly dark this month. Transportation was redistricting committees are done. I don't know if you'd like to touch on that, I can, I can leave that be. We are back, we're slated back to be in the South Bay Assembly District, currently run by Almer Succi. No change to our senate location. However, for the county, we'll move into District Two as opposed to the South Bay District Four. District Two is currently served by Supervisor Mitchell. So new to us, we will be having a governmental meet and greet for the beach cities new to her district here in the beginning of January in Hermosa, hosted by the Hermosa City Council. I wanted to call out some excellent work, not just by our Public Works Department in responding to the rain and what I'm sure will be a great response for them on rain this week, but I witnessed fire over on Loma Vista responding on the open, right up to the opening of Candy Cane Lane to an older gentleman EMS call, street full of terrified children. And a professional conduct, the way they handled it, the way they put the kids' mind at ease. Again, first-rate services by our departments. And it was really like at the time, it was pretty gripping, but it was really something to see how they did it professionally. So a note to them on that as a part from all my never, no, nebulous governmental minutia. That's all for me.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proton Pimentel. Let's see, might I be brief? There's a desalination is up for discussion tomorrow at West Basin's board meeting. Stay tuned. The two items under that are to, or two action items, I should say, are to dissolve the, my notion, I suppose, of going forward with desalination or to continue. So stay tuned on that. We've gotten several letters from our surrounding beach cities opposed to desalination. And I just want to commend the chamber for another great parade and also want to publicly apologize for holding up the parade as I ran out of candy and ran into the liquor store to buy more. It was worth it. Next year, I almost took some of Carol's, but she ran out too. There were so many kids out there, it was awesome. And so great to see. All right, let's see, we've got, I've got it. Oh, yeah, great. Carol, why don't you? That's a great idea. Go ahead, please do. Oh, well, we had two really, let's see. At the volunteer luncheon today, Scott, recall, we had Carl Jacobs who retired and he got a nice plaque and he is the husband of former mayor Sandy Jacobs, great power couple in town here, and he retired today. And then we had a gentleman, I'm drawing a blank, was it Tom that won the volunteer of the year?
We're going to have interim police chief Jaime Muniz. Is he still out there?
Yeah, when he gets a moment, we can continue, but I definitely want, it's a great point, Carol, we should acknowledge him because that is a volunteer job where they're patrolling around the cities in our volunteer patrol cars. And we had today's winner of the volunteer patrol officer of the year.
I believe it was like nine hundred hours that they've given volunteered. So it's the, our ESP, so it's a volunteer police team made up of residents and some non-residents and they go around the town and they've given, volunteered nine hundred hours. They provide services for our parades, for our, for many different events in town and we just thank them for their volunteer hours and for doing that.
Funny enough, no coyote sightings. I asked them today at our table, which is amazing.
So, Mr. Mayor, Dennis Falk was the
Dennis Falk.
Volunteer of the year.
Awesome, thank you. Former, worked for the EPA for many years. Yeah, very cool. All right. Thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Persick. That's great. This is my favorite thing to do every year that I've been up here. And this is a very important item. So we are here to approve a very special request by Mr. S. Claus. I can't say this with a mask on. For a waiver of the permits required for doing business, you know, we take business very seriously in El Segundo, within the city of El Segundo as follows. Approve request by Mr. S. Claus for waiver of the permits and are as follows. Stating your last name, do I have a motion to approve the following? A waiver of permits for, one, the use of air rights and waiver of the Santa Monica radial one sixty R procedure. Two, grant a free business license for a nonprofit organization. Three, waiver of the noise ordinance to permit the sound of bells. Four, waiver of the trespass ordinance, including dealing with trespassing animals. And five, waiver of the ordinance on animal regulations. Would someone like to move approval?
Persick so moved.
Oh, she beat you to it, Scott.
Beat me to it. Unbelievable, this one. Nickel's second.
She's got more holiday spirit than you. Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Aye.
Councilmember Persick?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boils?
Absolutely.
Five zero.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we're on to city attorney, anything to report this evening?
Just happy holidays and Merry Christmas to all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, by way of follow-up on the issue about recreation and park development fees, that's, will be coming on your agenda on the eighteenth under staff presentations, no, public hearing on developer impact fees. So we're working on that as it is, as we move toward the budget cycle. With respect to fees related to SV nine, SV nine does allow for impact fees. So when the new development takes place, when and if it does, the local governments can indeed have the impacts dealt with. We're going to also look at Quinby fees and, and our ability to use those. So we hear you loud and clear. The impacts will be identified and it'll be up to this governing board to decide how much you want to charge for that. The other items on, on that agenda, we're going to follow up on the proposed preferential parking district number two item that's been continued, but that will happen on the eighteenth. Civic center redevelopment, next steps, we finally have some clarity how to move forward on that. Three of you will be allowed to participate, two have conflicts on that item. That'll be an update. We have several items, the annual financial report for the fiscal year that ended, that will come to you. We will also have the calendar for the next budget cycle. It's two one-year cycles of binary budget format. Gateway entry sign monument landscape architect contract, we're moving forward on that item. Those are just a sample of the items. Oh, oh, then the, the CCVs, the commissions, committees and boards, I mentioned that earlier? That report will come to you on the eighteenth. Now, by way of the holidays are coming up, city offices will be closed for some of those days, Christmas Eve on the twenty-fourth, and that's on a Friday this week, and then the thirty-first. And the libraries are impacted as well. So we encourage you and residents, if you're unsure of the hours, just go to our website, check it out and you'll get clarity on the hours. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for a terrific 2021.